Alright, good evening. It is five o'clock, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. I will call the meeting to order for the school district, four eighty-two. At this time, I'd like you to please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Little Falls Community Schools works together for each learner to achieve academic and personal growth in a collaborative, safe, and engaging environment. Public comments.
Yes.
We have some public comments. Wonderful. Okay. So while we get this ready, I will read the policy in regards to public comments. Little Falls Community Schools welcomes you to the meeting of the Little Falls Board of Education. This portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of not more than thirty minutes. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to not more than three minutes. The board asks that all comments be in keeping with, contribute to, an atmosphere of civil, courteous, thoughtful, and respectful discourse. So Kelly, play the timer if it gets long and kind of give you the high sign. So, looks like we have Sarah. Could you please, you want us to come up here to the front table and speak where the microphone is?
Good morning, or good evening, members of the board. I would like to bring to your attention a serious concern regarding the implementation of a new procedure enacted by District forty-two as of September first, twenty twenty-five. This procedure appears to limit the inclusion of students with disabilities in extracurricular activities. It is important to note that many parents of special education students are not fully informed of their children's legal right to access extracurricular programs. This lack of communication paired with the new procedural barriers has resulted in very limited participation of special education students in district activities. In my own family's case, my child has successfully participated in an extracurricular activity for four consecutive years with accommodations, and has demonstrated consistent success. However, under the new procedure, I was informed that my child would no longer be permitted to participate despite the history of positive inclusion. This raises several critical questions. Number one, why is successful inclusion being reversed rather than supported? Number two, could this action be in response to our family exercising our legal right to revoke permission for the school district to bill our child's medical insurance? Number three, is this procedure disproportionately impacting students with disabilities and potentially students of color as a matter of inequity rather than policy? Additionally, I must address a concerning pattern of repeated requests from district employees for access to my child's medical information and communication with medical providers. Despite clearly declining these requests on multiple occasions, they continue to be brought forward in all meetings, which creates an environment that feels coercive rather than collaborative. In one such meeting, a district administrator responded to my refusal in a manner that was dismissive and inappropriate. This is not conducive to a respectful or trauma-informed partnership between families and the district. I respectfully request that the board, one, review the new extracurricular inclusion procedure to ensure it aligns with IDEA, Section five oh four, and state nondiscrimination requirements. Number two, ensure clear communication to all parents regarding their rights, including the right to revoke insurance billing authorization and the right of their child to participate in extracurricular activities with the appropriate accommodations. And number three, establish safeguards to prevent retaliation or repeated coercive requests for medical access when a parent has already denied that consent. This issue is not solely about one child. It is about ensuring that policies are implemented equitably, transparently, and in full alignment with both legal and ethical obligations. I urge the board to take corrective actions so that inclusion is not merely stated as a value, but also practiced consistently across all district activities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the oath of office for our student school board members. So we have our three new student school board members. We have John Allen, we have Maddie Holtz, and Megan Felbaum. So, I believe each of you have the oath in front of you. Alright, so why don't we all stand? If I can have you raise your right hand? And repeat, repeat after me. You're already good, Dan. I, you say your name.
I, John Allen.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duty- No, you guys are supposed to be reading this, not me.
Read with them.
Solemnly swear, let's read together, that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Student School Board Members for Little Falls Community Schools, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the rights and interests of the students I represent. I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota. I will work with dedication and integrity to support the goals and values of our school community and uphold the principles of fairness and respect for students and the community. Congratulations, each and every one of you. We are welcome. We are proud to have you as members of the School Board of Education. Thank you. You want to get a picture?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could. Jeff, because John has to leave early for the choir concert. If you would like to steal a picture, maybe you did already. You did, okay. Never mind.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Alright, now, next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. So I look for a motion to approve the agenda. So, a motion by Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The consent agenda should be in your packet or, I guess, on your computer. I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mark, a second by Kelsey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Resolutions, this is you, Kelsey?
This is me.
Okay, and, go ahead.
I am introducing the following resolution. Whereas the following have generously offered to donate to Little Falls Community Schools, therefore be it resolved by the Little Falls Community Schools Board of Education to gratefully accept the gifts. Peers Area Commercial Club, Peers Area Freedom Music Fest, donation of five hundred dollars to Little Falls Community Schools High School FFA program. Teresa Welters, donation of two hundred and fifty dollars to the Little Falls Community Schools Project Band Aid to repair school band instruments. Eckroth Music, donation of one thousand dollars to Little Falls Community Schools High School Band for Copper Street Bass Services, bass services. Little Falls Elementary PTA, donation of twenty thousand dollars to the Little Falls Community Schools Lindbergh Playground Project. City of Little Falls, donation of forty-two thousand dollars to Little Falls Community Services Program. Brothers Exteriors, donation of services valued at seven thousand five hundred dollars to tear out the existing playground at Lindbergh. Ronald Mueller, donation of a thousand dollars to the Randall Area Scholarship Fund in memory of Janelle Mueller, Frederick Mueller, June Del Mueller, Eleanor Mueller, Sharon Larson, and her husband Lloyd Larson. Anonymous, donation of four thousand dollars to the Little Falls Community Schools Industrial Tech Department. Joyce and Andrew Mundal, donation of fifty dollars to Little Falls Community Schools Science Department in memory of Mike Valentine. School Outfitters, donation of six thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents for the purchase of furniture for Little Falls Community Schools Lincoln Library, which was a purchase initiated by the Little Falls Elementary PTA. Little Falls Workers Association, donation of seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents to Flyer Fest. Little Falls Youth Baseball, donation of trees valued at one thousand five hundred dollars to Little Falls Community Schools Bell Prairie Campus. Jimmy and Megan Johnson, donation of trees valued at fifteen hundred dollars to the Little Falls Community Schools. Stephanie Nielsen, donation of two hundred and fifty dollars to the Little Falls Community Schools Robotics Program. Road Runner Mopped, Mopped Club? Moped, oh, yeah, moped club, thank you. Donation of two hundred dollars to the Little Falls Community Schools Scholarship Fund. Fab Flyers Athletic Boosters, donation of three hundred dollars to the Little Falls Community Schools Varsity Club. Mary Hammer and Kelly Fulford, donation of five hundred dollars to the Little Falls Community Schools Care Closet. Hanakin Insurance Agency, donation of two hundred and fifty dollars to Flyer Fest, Little Falls Fire Fest. Amanda Standich, donation of an X-Carve N- or CNC machine to the Little Falls Community Schools Industrial Technology Department.
I will second your motion.
Okay, so, she left us on a night where it was like super long. Alright, roll call. So Dan?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It has passed.
Thank you, Kelsey. Next, we have our flyer pride cards. Mark, I'll have you start off, please.
Alright. The first one is through the third grade team. All the teachers, thank you for all your helping in my transition from second grade at Dr. Knight to third grade at Lincoln, or Lindbergh, sorry. You have all been welcoming, so welcoming and encouraging. I appreciate all your support. I'm looking forward to a great year. Glenda Davis. Annette Wettenstein, Wetstein, administrative assistant. Amy goes above and beyond every day. She works hard to build relationships with students and staff. She is always ready to help whenever needed. I cannot do my job without her. Christine Holliday. Christina Holliday. Amanda Miller. Para, Amanda has been a great support and stepped into her role with a great deal of energy and helps me out whenever I need to take a lunch break or attend a CST training. Laura Martenson. Here's one for Glenda Davis, teacher. Thank you for your hard work this summer preparing for the building transition. I appreciate your effort and positive attitude. You bring to, your positive attitude you bring to everything you do. Greg Johnson. And Emily Masurz, Special Education Coordinator. I would like to recognize and thank Emily for her outstanding support and leadership. She constantly goes above and beyond to ensure students and staff receive support they need. I truly appreciate her dedication, expertise, and positive impact she has made at Lindbergh Elementary. Larry Edgerton.
Hi, I'm Monique Waldeck-Las, para. Monique has done a fantastic job jumping into a schedule change and being a great support with new students. Lauren Martenson. Tally Novas, kindergarten teacher. As a first grade teacher, I am so thankful for the routines and procedures you put in place last year in kindergarten as it has made for a very smooth transition into first grade for me and my students. Sally Hare.
Rusty Goss, principal. It's hard to put into words the positive impact Rusty has had at the middle school. The change can be seen in our clean lunchroom, our quiet hallways, and our students getting the firm but fair support they need. Our staff has been energized by you, Rusty. So, so grateful. Rachel Coda. Monique Waldeck-Las, para. I'd like to recognize Monique for her willingness to approach each day with curiosity, a willingness to learn, and a positive attitude. Her readiness to take on new challenges and support students in any way needed has made a notable impact on our early childhood team. Janet Toma. Nicole Steele, teacher. What a great addition to Lincoln. Thank you for sharing your experience with the pilot curriculum and piloting since you have taught it the past four years. Your time and expertise is so helpful. Sally Hare.
Rebecca Jones, school readiness teacher. Rebecca has come into a new building and been a great addition. She is always a smiling face to see in the hall and at lunch. Lauren Martenson. Cheryl Moore, kindergarten teacher. As a first grade teacher, I am so thankful for the routines and procedures you put in place last year in kindergarten as it has made for a very smooth transition into first grade for me and my students. Sally Hare. Rebecca Fritz-Suller. These names are hard sometimes. Para-professional. Becca has shown incredible love and compassion for her students. Her patience, eagerness to learn, and wonderful sense of humor brightens the classroom each day. The joy and trust she receives in return from her students are a true reflection of the positive relationships she builds. We are very lucky to have her. Isaac Toma. Rebecca Jones, preschool teacher. I'd like to recognize Rebecca Jones, a preschool teacher who has made a seamless transition to a new building and is absolutely thriving. She brings creativity, joy, and a sense of fun to everything she does, making learning and exciting adventure for her students. We are so grateful to have her in our district. Janet Toma. Sarah Underhill, homecoming co-advisor. I want to thank Sarah Underhill for her amazing work on homecoming this year. She is a delight to work with, and her infectious positive attitude, creative ideas, and detailed work ethic made this year's homecoming go smoothly. We are so lucky to have her as a teacher in our district, and I am grateful to have her as a colleague. Kamnilla Larson.
Brittany Benson, ECSC para. Brittany has been a master juggler this year. She handles anything thrown at her with grace and patience. Lauren Martenson. Emily Nybauer, kindergarten teacher. As a first grade teacher, I am so thankful for the routines and procedures you put in place in kindergarten last year as it has made for a very smooth transition into first grade for me and the students. Sally Hare. Chris Dovis, principal. Thank you for implementing routines and procedures that are school and classroom-wide as the consistency has been helpful to students and teachers as it creates consistent expectations for everyone. Keep leading well. When leaders lead well, we can do what we are called to do, and that is teach. Sally Hare. McKenna Inez, middle school teacher. Thank you for being the educator you are. You are not only teaching our students about classroom lessons, but you are helping them become independent and teaching them to be advocates for themselves. Thank you, Melissa Przyzynski. Michelle Schultz, Special Education teacher. I want to thank you for your flexibility and professionalism you have shown with change of your teaching assignment. The shift came right before the school year started, yet you have handled it with positivity. Larry Edgerton.
Janay Nagel, industrial tech teacher. Janay has been very helpful with implementing school links at the CEC. She's quick to answer questions or swing down to work with our staff. Thank you for all you do. Kristi Holliday. Tressa Geshwell, early childhood sped teacher. Tressa is an exceptional early child sped teacher. She consistently goes above and beyond to communicate with families, ensuring they feel informed and supported every step of the way. Her ability to see and nurture each child's strengths and needs is truly remarkable. Janet Toma, early learning coordinator. Peyton Carl, para-professional. From the first days of the school year, Peyton has stepped up and embodied the true definition of flyer pride. His unique ability to always have a smile on his face brings out the best in his students and those around him. Peyton has helped set the tone for a great school year. Isaac Toma. Brenda Keen, kindergarten teacher. As a first grade teacher, I'm so thankful for the routines and procedures you put in place last year in kindergarten as it has made for a very smooth transition into my first grade for me and my students. Sally Hare. And Miranda Nelson, school readiness teacher. Miranda has been a great partner this year, taking everything in stride and being someone to laugh and lean on. Lauren Martenson.
Alright, so, thank you, everyone, for submitting those. Alright, next. I know we just swore EM, you guys have a presentation? Wonderful. Alright, I'll let you take it away.
We thought tonight would be best spent with introductions. So, no updates regarding what's going on at school. We'll start with Megan.
I'm Megan Felbaum. I am currently a junior at the high school. I'm very involved in FFA and also participate in track outside of school. I am very active in the Morrison County 4H program. Through my years in FFA and 4H, I have served on many officer positions, including the FFA Vice President, 4H Treasurer Secretary, and also President this year. I was also the reporter of the Morrison County 4H Federation. More recently, I have taken on the role of being the Minnesota State Beef Ambassador, where I advocate for the beef cattle industry and agriculture as a whole throughout Minnesota. I am honored to be given this opportunity and excited to be a voice for our student body. And then these are just some pictures, so that was our egg sales team, she for FFA. The middle picture is when I was being a beef, well, my one role as beef ambassador, interacting with the younger generation, which is very special to me because I believe it's very important, and also a track. And then, besides school activities and the homework, I enjoy showing my livestock and farming with my family. These are just some pictures of what I do outside of school.
That's Megan.
I'm Maddie Holtz. Just like Megan, I'm a junior. I'm not as involved as her, John, but I'm really active in FFA and 4H. Within FFA, I'm also on the egg sales team with Megan. We competed in the region last year and got first place, and then at state, we got fourth. We're really excited, and our goal this year is to make nationals. Within 4H, I've served as the secretary for many years, and now I have gotten the opportunity to be Vice President with Megan for our 4H Cup. I also raise and show pigs, sheep, and cattle with the help of my parents and my uncle. Every day in and outside of school, I love to learn something new, and I'm really grateful for this opportunity to be student rep and see what I can learn. So, the picture on the far left is me at the county fair. In the middle is our team. My mom made some posters encouraging us for state. And then, the picture on the far right is us standing behind the stage before we knew what place we got. And then, my animals, of course. My dad helps me a lot with my pigs, so, me and my dad farming on the far left. The one with my cow on the bottom is actually in Denver, Colorado. Megan and I go out every January. And then, the one up top is my first ever calf I got. And then, down below is my first lamb I've ever had.
They tried to put me to work at the state fair. Disappeared quickly. John Allen.
My name is John Allen. I'm a senior at the high school, and I am involved in basketball, baseball, band, and choir. I'm the choir president this year, and then I'm also in jazz band and jubileers, and I am involved in the spring musical. And then, I have also been in the all-state choir the last two years, which is a great opportunity to learn more about other schools and other people from different schools. I've also been involved in the Little Falls Theater Company the last few years, which my family probably takes in, and that's been a good opportunity to get to know other people as well. And I, being involved in these activities, has allowed me to get to know different groups of people and learn how other students, you know, go about life. And I hope they'll let me give everyone a voice, and I want to thank you guys for this opportunity. That's a picture of me playing baseball in Iowa. Baseball is my favorite sport. And then, picture on the right is from our band concert last year. And then, the bottom picture is those are five of our seniors this year on the basketball team.
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
Forward to the reports. Okay, next, we have our secondary school planning, grade seven through twelve. So I am assuming our representatives from Woodset will be here.
Yeah, if I could start.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just say, first of all, welcome to Lindsay Kreins and Steve Rosidlo. We've gotten to know these two pretty well the last month or so as we've talked about the possibilities that exist with enhancing our strategic plan and looking at a seven-through-twelve secondary school. But I just wanted to read real quickly, under strategic plan, priority area one, the three goal areas, and goal number one is develop and implement a comprehensive plan to ensure financial stability. Goal two is to develop and implement a comprehensive facilities plan that addresses the district's needs for the next five to ten years while ensuring safe, secure, and future-ready facilities. And then finally, goal three, enhance safety and security for all students and staff across school settings. And I really feel the work that we've been doing the past month or so is really helping us meet those goals. So we'll turn it over to these two.
Thank you for the warm welcome, Superintendent Johnson. Good to be here again with you all. I am Lindsay Kreins from Woodset. I am a K-12 Planning Specialist, I guess is what you could call me. Really dedicated my career to helping school districts with their projects. So it's really a pleasure to be here and be working with you all.
And I'm Steve Rosidlo, I'm the former Brainerd Public Schools Superintendent. Was high school principal before that. Have a passion for K-12 education. I must say, all of good wishes to you going forward through all of the tough discussions and decisions that you'll have to take forward and have already begun to do so. But, but, just by means of introduction, I am new to the role at Woodset and just joining the K-12 Services Team. But I've had wonderful opportunity in the short couple of months to already be involved with the conversations taking place with district leadership. Also had the benefit of having members of your school district professional staff come up through and tour Brainerd school facilities. And then, most recently, sitting and listening in input sessions with middle school and high school professionals, talking about some of their hopes and dreams for what may be. And there's been a strong realization and a strong commitment to caring and taking, caring for and taking care of all of the wonderful assets and the traditions and the history that you have in Little Falls. So just by means of introduction, I think we've got some very wonderful people who've been part of input sessions and listening and process discussions that they know aren't finished yet, they know are headed in directions that they can't necessarily control, but are very thankful to have been a part of. So, good on all of you.
Great. A few other members on our team, probably encountered them in some way, shape, or form, and you'll continue to see them. Katie Hildenbrand, she's also a K-12 Planning Expert. And then Brady Bussler from our team, he's a marketing and communication specialist. So he's the brains behind all of the marketing videos you not only see from Woodset, but also produce for our clients. And so Brady has a series of very successful referendum videos just to use for educational purposes to really get the message out. So Brady will definitely be engaged a little bit further on in the process, much more. So, tonight we're here to update you on the referendum process to date. We've put in a lot of effort, a lot of legwork, a lot of meeting hours. And so we just wanted to give you a really good recap on what we've done with the school district thus far. In summary, we've had our building inspection and facility assessment team through the high school building. They did a complete facility assessment report, which will highlight for you this evening. We also have conducted several school tours, so really focusing on relevant similar type of projects that could be really relatable to some of the ideas that have been generated here with the staff. We have conducted two series of user group meetings, both at the high school and the middle school. First was really just a listening session. We wanted to really meet with the educators and hear them talk about their current spaces and how they could envision their space in the future. And then user groups, so we really came back with ideas on paper and got their reaction to those ideas. So, that will come through then in our building concept plans, which we have for you this evening. So first up in our process is really understanding the current facility that you have from a brick and mortar perspective. So really just understanding the building, how it functions, exterior envelope, the site, the mechanical system, the electrical systems, interior atmosphere. That's what we really look at when we look at the facility assessment. So we have a series of professionals that come tour the facility. It's a full inspection day. We kind of go top to bottom. We're on the roof, we're in all the rooms and nooks and crannies of the building. We take a look at exterior ADA access, water drainage on site. We take a look at the building envelope, so are you able to keep the elements of the building out? You know, roof conditions, window conditions, so on and so forth. We take a look at the interior environment. Do you have lighting controls? Do you have the right indoor air quality as well from a mechanical perspective? What we learned is that a lot of the building has been very well maintained over the years. However, there's areas of the building, particularly mechanically and electrically, that are original still. And so our project really focuses, or the facility assessment really focuses on those areas. You can see highlighted in yellow, those areas of primary focus mechanically is understanding those original systems and then- , um, understanding those original systems and then proposing some replacement options, um, to better outfit those buildings. So the facility assessment, this is the, the list that was high-level summary generated from the report. So again, the replacement of those existing mechanical systems. So this is the HVAC and the plumbing systems. Replacement of the boiling boiler system and pneumatic controls. So there's, there has been a lot of updates to the building over time, but there are still some areas of the building, again, that are original. Electric controls and efficiency fixtures. So a lot of the building also has been updated to LED lighting, but there's still portions of that building that are kind of behind times, so looking to update those and bring those up to today's standards. Replacement of original exterior windows. So the building was built in the seventies, so we're encroaching that fifty to fifty-five year old window. Um, definitely time to take a look at those windows and entrances. Um, we also have one existing, um, roof that is area F of your building, so that's the auditorium music area of the building, so looking to replace that roof. Science lab casework replacement, so there's some still existing lab casework there that has been running throughout the rest of the interior remodel project, so looking to update that. And then also tuck pointing, which is just making sure the brick-and-mortar of the building are, are really stout and intact there from an exterior envelope perspective. I'm a visual learner, so I put together a map for you, so you can kind of see where that scope of work that I just summarized would take place. Um, the big takeaway here is the area in green. Um, those are areas that are primary mechanical focuses, so that's just mechanical areas that would need to be updated. A lot of that on the first level has been updated from an interior perspective, new paint, new lighting, um, new carpet. The mechanical systems are original, so really looking to get those updated. The area in blue is area of heavy remodel, which we'll get into a little bit further when we look at the concept plans, but the upper level, which is on the right-hand side of that page, is a very heavy remodel that we're proposing, since the mechanical systems will all need to be replaced through an update process. That would entail, um, coming behind architecturally and making sure that that building gets refreshed as well from, uh, after that mechanical process. And then we have kind of this orange area throughout the building. These are areas of, um, medium areas, scope of work, that would just be kind of tweaks here and there to accommodate areas of learning the seventh and eighth graders into the building. Areas such as the CTE, the art, um, the fax lab, those areas will all need to be assessed just to make sure that we've got the room to bring those seventh and eighth graders in. And then again, we've got the area F roof, which is kind of that diagonal hatch line. That's the roof replacement of that auditorium building and then the supporting spaces around that. So I think it lays out graphically the areas that have been updated throughout the years, and then the areas that we're looking to help support through a building project. After we established the brick-and-mortar, it was time to settle on school tours, and these kind of peppered in between our music groups, so we really understood what the staff is experiencing in their current buildings, and then through some of our recent experience, we were able to help kind of guide some opportunities for tours for visual aids to really see how these ideas are put into play at different schools around the area. So our first stop was Crosby-Irington Secondary Building. This was a Woodset project partnered with the Contegrity Group. Um, why we wanted to look at this, this was a multi-phase project conducted over several years, actually still ongoing. Um, interior remodels, so no additional square footage was added to this building, which is definitely a trend we're seeing across the state of Minnesota right now, and this is an integrated model, so fifth grade through twelfth grade is in this facility. Um, another stop we had was Brainerd High School. In particular, A Building, this is their two-level core academic building, so math, science, social studies, and English is what's housed in this building. No opportunity for growth, only interior renovation, and it was nineteen-seventies original mechanical system. So really apples to apples when we compare your core education building to this core education building. I almost think it was the same architect. We've got the same little skinny blockers in both buildings, so kind of coincidentally. Um, the before image on the left-hand side of the page indicates these tiny little narrow corridors that were really a supervision nightmare. You had to have a lot of staff out there in the corridors during circulation times. There was a lot of blind corners, um, really a nightmare from a circulation perspective. There was no real clear sightlines throughout the whole building. On the right, the after image is completely reconfiguring those classroom spaces, widening the corridors, allowing for some learning commons spaces. You can even see that English classrooms are all kind of back-to-back around a centralized learning commons, and then we have an English special ed classroom right there. So for breakout opportunities, you're right there within your educational commons area, so you don't have to travel far for those particular services. Here's a picture. This was the before on the right, so you can see those narrow little corridors. Backpacks weren't being used in the locker room, so they're all over. It was really a circulation nightmare. And then the image on the left is from our tour, so opening up those corridors, you can even see a centralized, uh, English library here, so they actually have a checkout kiosk right outside of their English classrooms. So you don't even have to go down to the media center to check out your books. It's actually right there within those English suites. Here's another view of that. So our six English classrooms back-to-back within the supporting special ed space at the end of that learning commons. And lastly, Rockbridge High School. So the reasons we saw this building was an integrated seventh through twelfth grade concept. So this area, these areas of the building are not separated at all, so the students , uh, co-mingle in all of their classroom corridor spaces, break out into the same departmental areas of the building versus grade-level areas of the building. Um, so main takeaways were natural daylight and then the introduction of learning commons spaces. Buildings that were built in the nineteen-seventies frankly did not accommodate for learning commons or special ed services, so it's really nice to see a brand-new building, um, being able to really envision how we would approach those spaces. So circling back to user group meetings, these are certainly ongoing. We've, um, again, spent two days each in the middle school and the high school, making sure that we can touch base with every department that's in the buildings, gathering feedback. Um, here are some of my notes in red, just collecting as much notes as we possibly can, pulling up floor plans and pictures on the screen as we go through these meetings. Um, we review the existing floor plan and then also proposed concept plans. Some of the staff were able to engage in the tours, um, throughout other buildings, and then we also got the opportunity to tour their spaces, so we became really familiar with what they had. Uh, we had lots of conversations regarding the integration of seventh and eighth grade into the high school. I think for me, my biggest takeaway was the excitement of the middle school. I almost went in thinking that it would be the opposite, that people would be concerned, um, and it just was really inspiring to hear the excitement and the ideas of integration and expanding programs for those seventh and eighth graders. So that was a really fun experience for me personally. Um, we talked about departmental organization and collaboration, bringing all the math teachers together, bringing all the science teachers together, and the benefits that could be generated in such a configuration. And then also the media center is kind of this tucked-away behemoth of a space, and so is there an opportunity to bring those resources closer to the school, or closer to the school, students, like I showed you in the, in the Brainerd High School model? So the culmination of all of those efforts is the development of conceptual building plans. So these are the plans we're currently using with our user groups. Um, this is definitely a work in progress, but I'll kind of walk you through the concept of this plan. So the area that we're looking at here is the two-level educational building, which is stacked on top of one another. On the right-hand side, that's the upper level. Left-hand side is the lower level. So we are kind of phasing into a culinary arts program model versus a traditional fax lab. So intro- introduction of the commercial-style kitchen spaces that can also accommodate the fax type of learning. So support spaces for that culinary arts lab and then also a fax classroom, so kind of that clean and dirty aspect of those classroom spaces. In the blue, um, you can see on the upper right-hand area of the lower level, we're developing a special education suite. So we're bringing the special ed level two and level three classes to a centralized location to start sharing and pairing those resources. We've incorporated the PACE lab and then also the DCD program. So again, development of the departmental approach here. The center of the building is still student support services. We've heard from this group that the location is really ideal. We're still kind of sorting out those details. Um, Mark and I just had a lovely meeting with that group this morning. We thought it would be best to pull not only the middle school teachers together, or the staff together, but the high school and have a collaborative meeting, so we're hosting a few more of those throughout the week, um, particularly like the music department, for example. We'll, we'll want to bring those two different groups together, because they'll experience a lot of integration, and we're trying to sort through that. The CEC area of this plan stays relatively untouched, although the introduction of a unisex restroom in that space, so really don't, we don't have to leave that area if not needed. The science department, as we know today, is being modified to accommodate the seventh and eighth grade classrooms within this area, so really, um, I think they were the first group that said, hey, we really want a departmental approach, and we think there's a lot of benefits to having all of those science rooms stay together in this area of the building. On the upper level, this is a complete reconfiguration of the upper level, which was made possible by recapturing the media center space and also recapturing some mechanical room space. By relocating those mechanical systems to the roof of the building, we opened up a lot of room on the, on the second level. As we come up either of the main stairwells, the first thing that will greet you is a really wide-open media center concept, so it will be the focal point and the learning point of this upper level of the building. Flanking that area are our support classrooms, or I should say, support spaces like special education. Um, we have a series of, uh, English classrooms shown on either side of that media center so that direct access to those resources. If we look at the north quadrant of the plan, this is shown in a departmental approach, so all of the math classrooms are circulating a learning commons and then special ed breakout spaces for that level one, um, breakout need. And then the southern portion of that upper level is, um, departmental approach to social studies. Um, again, centered around a learning commons, special ed, and then breakout room support spaces. We are introducing a universal restroom concept, so this is a one toilet room approach. You see it in multiple buildings, um, around our region. People are starting to gravitate towards this. It's a, um, just a really efficient way to manage and supervise those spaces, where typically it's, you can't really go into those more large-format toilets rooms, so these are those more individual toilet rooms, um, within the shared hand washing and support spaces for that area. Um, this is the main focus of the, of the project, but there is some other areas, again, as I had mentioned, the incorporation of the seventh and eighth graders, so possibly reconfiguring the tech ed to bring seventh and eighth grade tech ed into that area, which is very well-established in the high school. Um, the two art classrooms really support for the third art classroom to be in this area, and then also bringing our digital lab and the TV production studio to this level, much more closely located to the auditorium and gym spaces, so for event management purposes, um, much more centrally located for those, um, that need to access that space. And then lastly, there's just some areas around this commons area that would need to be reconfigured just to take advantage of some, um, areas of opportunity that aren't really utilized right now. So again, we're kind of working through those groups still as a work in progress, but, um, overall, this is where we're, we're feeling pretty good with the user group meetings. A few more to get through, but, um, we think very shortly we'll have a, a fully-developed concept plan that's ready for, um, your review and approval moving forward.
Lindsay, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
We have, this week, the board has received, uh, several emails from activity groups, um, concerned about gym space. Can you talk a little bit about how we would utilize the space that's there?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've done a lot of digging into the gym space, and we feel as though, um, bringing the seventh and eighth graders in, we've got five areas to support the gym space. So in our current gym, we can divide that space into two unique areas. We also have our weight room, we have our wrestling slash multipurpose room, and then we have the north mezzanine. And though I'm not ideal, it certainly will work from a programmatic standpoint.
But to a limited, like in the north mezzanine, that's a, this, that's just a long, narrow, concrete area.
Correct.
Behind the stands, so to speak.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Lindsay, the second level education wing, how many classrooms are added to this proposal?
So currently, we have enough classroom spaces for each teacher so that there's not a flexible model in place, like Rockbridge has a flexible model. You don't own your classroom. So currently, we have a space for each teacher, seventh through twelfth grade in those core classes, and then we have flexible classrooms built in, so areas to grow. If enrollment grows up, we don't have to come back and say, oh, whoops, we have to remodel, because we have more class, more students, which is a great problem to have. So I think we've got four flexible classrooms and twenty-eight, twenty-nine traditional classrooms, if I recall my numbers correctly.
Any other questions? Like it?
I would say overall, the plan's been very well-received. Um, there is some conversation still deeper about seventh and eighth grade integration into, um, the ninth through twelfth graders, and the beauty behind this plan is really the labels could be erased, because none of those classrooms on the upper level are proprietary to any, um, core course, um, that you could really envision, like, oh, maybe the, the left side could be seventh and eighth, and then the right side could be the others, or north to south. Um, you could have a really blended departmental approach, or you could have a more segmented seventh to eighth grade approach, too. Lots of flexibility.
What are your thoughts?
I like it. I feel like there is a space for all.
What, I mean, what's your opinion about seventh and eighth graders going up there? Do you see it as an issue with older kids, or?
I don't see it as any issue.
Thank you.
With the, the bathrooms, they would, they would keep, like, the regular bathrooms and then add the single ones? Is that what it would be?
So we'd be taking away your existing bathrooms and completely rebuilding them, and so it would be a series of individual rooms that you would enter into. It's, we call them toilet rooms, and then once you exit that space, you have a centralized wash station, so hand washing, drinking feltins, paper towel, um, really great from an observation perspective.
So think of it like, how they explain it to us is, there's a door right there. You might have five doors along that wall. Each would have its own toilet in there, so then I can stand back here, and the hand washing might be right here, and then I can make sure, you know, you're in there, it's closed, but you, one person can supervise, as opposed to the current bathrooms you go in, and you can have how many people in there. Nobody knows what's going on.
But you could go in and use the bathroom, and then I could go into the same bathroom when you're done and use that same bathroom.
So don't need a male, female type deal?
Okay. You know, there's a lot of, obviously a lot of work that needs to, to continue, and I, I agree, Lindsay. I think this plan, this proposal has been well-received, it's well-thought-out. There's nothing flashy, but it does capitalize on the space that we have, and I, I think, when you look at that upstairs wing, when you come upstairs, although we've added a significant number of classrooms, it does not feel like we've compressed the space and lost flexibility to have those open spaces where we can create a media center, learning commons approach, I think will be well-received and a good use of that space.
Uh, to note, um, the classroom spaces have not decreased at all. They're, they're either the same size they are now, or they've just slightly increased in size, so that was a big goal of ours, too, is making sure that, um, those classrooms are not shrinking in size to achieve this plan, so that was a, a, a good success of this plan.
When it comes to the bathrooms in this concept, are we losing bathroom capabilities compared to what we currently have?
No, so, um, the, the ADA accessibility code will definitely restrict us or guide us in making sure that we've got the, the correct amount of toilet fixtures, uh, making sure that we both have accessibility, um, built in, and then ambulatory access as well. Um, and then also incorporation of the staff restrooms that would be kind of outside of this U-shape, um, like student area, so the staff really wanted to make sure that they have their own separate space.
Lindsay, you can reference, there's code that establishes how many restroom facilities or toilets you have to have in the building.
Yeah, and we'll take a look at the building as a whole to establish that toilet fixture comes.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, one more comment, just, just out of the, the professionalism and for the professionalism of, uh, on the current commitment of the staff that have been, uh, involved in the tours and the input sessions. I think everyone is looking, uh, to try and make the most constructive, healthy decisions for community that can be made.
And I'm assuming, I mean, I know you referenced it earlier, that currently in its state, we're talking about original stuff, so original mechanical, original HVAC stuff, that any improvements we are going to do is gonna, uh, what's it gonna give us longevity? Is it gonna give us thirty years? Is it gonna give us forty years? I mean, what's the?
Yeah, with great maintenance. I mean, your existing system is over fifty years old, and it's had amazing maintenance. It's just passed it- It's just passed its useful life at this point. It's hard to find parts for that antiquated equipment. And so we would hope that a building project like this would get you at least thirty years down the road, if not further, with great maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
So our next steps are to finish out our user group meetings, put a more refined concept plan together. And then we'll probably come back to a work session and start to talk budget strategies and what this cost would be associated with. And then did the different funding strategies would be our next steps.
Throw this out to you, board members. We'll have to check calendars maybe after the meeting, but we're looking at potentially a work session on November fifth. It's a Wednesday. That would give us time to be able to dig into these plans a little bit more. The following week, November tenth, a community meeting. That's the same night as a board meeting. We thought we'd have an opportunity for the community to see this, ask questions, and then follow it up with a regular board meeting. Capitalize on your time here. And then working backwards, we would need, to be able to pull this off, we would need board approval of a review and comment on December eighth, your December board meeting. Want to thank these folks for their time.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, too, I do know that our city administrator from Little Falls, Alex Smith, is here as well as I see Mr. Glaze from the city council as well. Not sure, not to put you on the spot, Alex, Dave, but any comments or questions?
Uh, do you want me to approach her?
Yeah, come on up.
Sure. But leave Mr. Glaze back there.
He gets into trouble. He gets to go to our own council meeting next. So all of this seems like it's been really well thought over and it's nice to see. On our perspective with the city, we have had those discussions of should the school district vacate that middle school? We do understand that our own facilities are struggling right now. Our police department is in a building that is not doing well. And the longevity for that building is not sustainable. City Hall itself is also a very old building. It's been numerous things in the past and it's encroaching on the end of its life. So should the school district vacate the middle school? There is currently interest in looking into utilizing half of that space. It would be a great location. And instead of having to build a brand new building, it would give us the opportunity to save dollars in remodeling. We did have the pleasure to tour it and we see that there's a lot of, the bones of the building are really set. There's great security structures. There's classrooms that are easily converted into items we would need already numerous offices, for instance. So we see that there could be some cost-saving measures from our end to partner with the school district. Again, that is if you decide to go forward with that approach. It has potential and the city council is interested in hearing more. Any questions? One in the back.
Mr. Glaze.
I'm gonna come up. Number one, you were talking about the integration of the seventh and eighth graders. I think, I don't know the minds of high school kids these days. It's been a long time since I've been in high school, a real long time. But I would think a lot of them would probably help the younger kids get going in this if there's any problems or anything. That's just my opinion. And number two, what Alex was talking about, there has been some discussion, obviously. And in my opinion, I think financially it would be good for both of us. That, you know, if we could work out something, you know, if you're gonna give it to us and, you know. Nobody else is smiling over there. But the one thing that kind of worries me, you want to run a referendum for this remodeling? So if we get involved, we're gonna have to remodel the middle school. And that's gonna take some money from the people in Little Falls also. That's the only thing I worry about is, you know, we're getting, they may get hit with two shots. I don't know, does that make sense?
It does. And, you know, and part of the problem, and we've discussed this a little bit, is we've been slapping Band-Aids on all of these buildings for a long, long time.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, you know, we're just kind of at the point. I mean, I think in one of the discussions that came, our last referendum, that mechanical was probably, you know, probably a million and a half to two million dollars. And I'm sure it's probably tripled or quadrupled by now, you know? So, I mean, you think about that, we can, I mean, we can say no and we don't have to do these things, but at some point, taking the police station, that thing might just tip over.
I'm surprised it hasn't. You know, I understand, you know, in the long run, it costs more money to Band-Aid it than it is to get it done right. I understand that, but hitting them at the same time, I mean, that's, and you know, I don't know the demographics of Little Falls, but I'm assuming a lot of it is people on social security and fixed incomes, you know? And if you hit, that's my thing that worries me. If we can work something out, you know, I'd be, I'm all for the idea, trust me. Trust me, I'm just saying, I can see a problem.
I guess for us, Dave, and again, I'm speaking for myself and not for the other board members here. But, you know, we are, we are at the point where, I mean, our student enrollment is declining. We are doing what we have to do to save money for the voters and for the school district because we are operating five buildings with half the enrollment we had when they all first opened. So, I mean, I think we're being as prudent as we can. And I would argue that same thing. If the city took over the middle school building, they're being as prudent as they can because.
Yeah, they know we need a new police station.
Right, exactly.
We need a new city hall.
I just, I find it hard, I understand that, you know, not everybody is happy about their taxes going up. But the option, the other, the other side of it is, is then nobody comes here because we have antiquated buildings and we have antiquated, I mean, nobody in the police station. We can't get people, we can't hire good police because they're in a room that's as big as this table. And, you know, and we have, you know, our school is great. It has been maintained, but it's an old building. You look in our, walk into our hallway.
Building seventy-two.
It's old, you know? And they've done a great job maintaining it, but at some point.
We have, yeah, no, I understand we have to do it. I'm just.
Right, and we're just doing what we have to do for the district. And clearly you guys have to do what you have to do for the, for the city. But I think we're being responsible, you know, constituents for our, or leaders for our constituency based on this.
Well, that's what we're trying to do with the city too. You know, we know we can't go out and spend fifty million dollars on a new police station and fifty million dollars on a new city hall, you know, that's just, that's out of the reach. I'm just saying, you know.
No doubt.
You know, but like I said, I think it's a great plan. I like it very much. And again, Alex knows me and she knows I'm cheap. So I, I say financially, it's good for both of us. That's what, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So.
It's a responsible option.
Very responsible option.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for being here.
All right, next item we have is communications and community engagement updates. Ms. Przynski. Good to have you here.
If I could just quickly reference our strategic plan one more time.
Yes.
And the two goal areas under communications and community engagement. Goal one is to create partnerships with families, the community, business partners, and civic organizations to support and expand learning opportunities for each student. And goal two is to create and implement a plan to improve communications and transparency. And I, I can say with great confidence, and I know many others in our district feel the same way, that Melissa has come in and really hit the ground running in addressing these goal areas. So we're glad to have her here tonight and provide an update to you folks.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for that introduction. Do I need to do the PowerPoint or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you need the cord?
Yes.
Well, to save some time, I think I can get started and then we'll pull the PowerPoint up. So thank you guys for the opportunity to be before you and speak. So when I had stepped into this role, our goal was simple. Build stronger connections with families, staff, students, and the broader community. Since June of 2025, we focused on laying a solid foundation through grant writing, social media, newsletters, community partnerships, improved internal systems, and a comprehensive communications audit to guide the future. Everything connects back to our district's strategic goals and our shared commitment to clarity, trust, and engagement. One of the first pieces of information and projects I've really been working on was really just kind of like sitting back and watching very slightly during the non-busy times of the summer. And it's helped kind of like guide where we want to go with our grants. So with our grants, so far I have submitted six. We've been awarded two and we're still awaiting for approval for four of them. A key priority for us has been identifying and pursuing these targeted grants that align with our district goals. Greg and I did spend quite a bit of time creating workflows that will support grants in the future. And that is to help that we're not, we're being good stewards of the dollars that we're requesting. We're asking for what we can maintain and what is sustainable in that. You know, we, we're a good partner for those individuals and organizations. So since June, we have written one for the MDA Farm to Table Grant for local food sourcing. Minnesota Power Foundation for Classroom Cruisers. I don't know if you've seen those, but they're these little bikes that, like stationary bikes, that house books. And so then the kids, it's used for kindergarten through like sixth grade. There's two different sizes. And we wrote a grant for five of them where they can sit and get their wiggles out while they're learning to read or reading. So the Bernick Family Foundation for Motor Labs. Again, this is another area for elementary kids to get their wiggles out. Do you want me to connect?
Google won't open unless you can get yours to go.
Help him out.
That's why we have stuff here.
Hey, Dave.
Okay, I got it.
You?
But I have it on my desktop, so I haven't done it. All right. Good, you guys have something to look at. There we go. Okay. All right. So our STEM ecosystem grant, it's about an eighty thousand dollar grant for a drone, for drones, robotics, and not virtual reality, but virtual equipment to help support the flyer media productions and other resources. And then the MDE Cyber Security Technology Grant, that is actually one we've been approved. Currently fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, where Scott is actually looking at the additional seven thousand. We have up to sixty thousand dollars to be reimbursed for security. So these grants not only provide essential resources for our classrooms, but they'll also help tell our district's story through concrete actions. All right, so modernizing how we connect. We have made significant progress in modernizing our communication strategies. By unifying our branding and templates and establishing a consistent schedule for weekly, monthly, and quarterly messages, both families and staff now have a clear understanding of when and where to find information. The Flyer Portal is a valuable resource for staff. We have streamlined internal workflows for grants, website requests, social media requests, branding guides. And we're really using that as, using the current tool to enhance information to our staff. And then additionally, we have enhanced visibility for district leadership through regular messaging, which fosters trust over time. All right, so expanding our digital reach. So as you can see, these are metrics from June twenty-third to October twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And then this is June twenty-third to October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. So we have consistently brought up our numbers, which it doesn't really mean, like, it means significant, but it's not a whole lot of information and it's not a whole. Yeah, sorry. We've had significant growth and we've gotten a lot of outreach and engagement. And that's really the main, you know, point of that, in our social media aspect. So our social media has emerged as one of our most powerful and impactful storytelling mediums. And since June, we have witnessed steady growth in both our follower count and engagement levels across our platforms. The Flyer Flash Weekly Video Series has established itself as a reliable connection with families, offering brief, personal, and timely content. Campaigns such as homecoming, student spotlights, and athletics coverage have fostered community pride while broadening our digital presence. It's not merely about posting updates. It's about actively shaping the narrative of our schools in real time. A lot of the great reaches have been our new staff or current staff. And we do outreach and it's been great and positive feedback, I feel, for our district, so.
If anybody's been on social media, you can see it's a, it's a significant increase. And that was obviously with your position, but that was obviously something that we realized that we were pretty poor at was our, our communication and our outreach. So it's, I think it's been a very obvious increase, so.
Awesome, awesome. I can't believe we got the superintendent to do the Flyer Flash videos. I thought he was gonna turn me down instantly. All right. So keeping our community informed with the, oh my goodness, the audit that was done, this, and the surveys that were done this last spring, you know, the big thing was the communication and getting things physically in somebody's hand. And so we have started our Flyer Connection, which is an in-depth look at district life that we bring information to the homes of our community. Each piece is structured intentionally with leadership updates, school features, activities, and community highlights. The feedback has been positive and I've been asked many times when the next one is coming out, which I'm just finalizing now, so it should be in homes either the last week of October or the first week of November. And for the future, what we're looking at is a monthly e-newsletter to help keep families and staff up to date on key events and celebrations district-wide. So they're not gonna just get that in-house, you know, every couple months piece of information. We'll have it, we'll have an e-newsletter that'll be posted on our website. Be sent out to families, community members, you know, you name it. And then website updates will also be a priority as we want to create clear paths and limit clicks for families, community members, staff, and students. All right, so building trust through the, through connection is the essence of communication. Communication goes beyond merely transmitting information. It's fundamentally about being engaged and present. We have enhanced our relationships through active involvement in organizations such as the Chamber and Mississippi Connections, as well as through our participation on the Board of the Little Falls Education Foundation. By consistently showing up in these events, we are fostering two-way relationships that empower us to better serve families and cultivate trust throughout the community. So, and Chamber of Commerce, typically they have a meeting once a month. And Mississippi Connections, we meet with them every week. And please feel free to jump in with questions at any time. All right, improving access and clarity. Internally, we have enhanced clarity and accessibility for our staff, simplifying the process of submitting information, locating resources, and staying updated. Externally, the website is undergoing a thorough cleanup and update to enhance navigation and the quality of content. With standardized branding and messaging, the district now presents a more cohesive and professional image. While these behind-the-scenes systems may not be glamorous, they are essential for ensuring consistent and reliable communication. So I'm very eager to see where this looks in six months from now. All right, so going to the audit. About two months ago, we had reached out to Sourcewell and they have a partnership with CISO who completed this audit for us. And this audit gave us a very comprehensive. And this audit gave us a very comprehensive look at our communication strategies. So we looked at before I had started and then kind of like the month, two months of starting and what we've already kind of put into place and what was that information. We collaborated with the Morris Leatherman Company to thoroughly review our website. Oops, I meant that we used that survey for this as information. We used our social media platforms and local paper reach. And here's what they had found, is that we first identified the need for a written strategic communications plan. This plan will align with our district's strategic goals and be informed by your input and our stakeholders. Next, we need to find a financial communications plan. This will provide clear, layered messaging to help you understand our budget and facilities' needs, especially concerning the bond issue and the middle school closure. I think this will be really beneficial as like a transparency tool to help our constituents understand like what does our budget mean and how to understand what the numbers mean and, and moving forward and making it so that, you know, parents like me that really don't understand the school district finances, say, or they're very complicated in the state of Minnesota, just really understand what we need to know and how to interpret. We will also conduct a communications effectiveness assessment. This will help us measure how well our staff and families are informed and engage in decision-making processes. Additionally, we're developing a marketing strategy to target local family, families considering enrollment options and retain those that are already here. And finally, we're rolling out a storytelling campaign across various platforms showcasing written, photo, and video stories that support our strategic goals and highlight daily excellence. And the last thing that they said was leadership integration, and that would be utilizing myself in the leadership team for decision-making and resource support. And all of these efforts are guided by data from the CISO audit and our partnership with Sourcewell strengthening our strategy and our focus. All right, so looking ahead, we have some exciting initiatives planned that will shape our communication efforts moving forward. First, we'll be developing a strategic communications plan. This will be our focus from November to December of 2025. It's crucial that this plan aligns with our district's strategic goals and incorporates feedback from all stakeholders. Next, during the same time period, we'll also build and roll out a financial communications plan. This is key to supporting discussions around our facilities and bond issues. Clear and layered messaging is vital to ensure our community understands our financial needs. Next, in early 2026, we will aim to launch a district storytelling campaign. This initiative will span across multiple platforms, sharing engaging stories that highlight our everyday excellence and support our strategic goals. It is awesome when people get awards and, you know, all of the great, big stuff that we, you know, intentionally go to celebrate, but with our storytelling and with what has already happened in our districts, like capturing those moments of that kindergarten or learning to read for the first time or sounding out letters, you know, those, that's what we're here for. We're here to get our students from preschool to 12th grade, and every single one of them has a story that we want to share. So we'll also conduct communications effectiveness surveys. I would like to do two per year to really see, you know, what is everybody's feedback? What is, what are they feeling about the district? How can we get information to them? This shouldn't cost anything. It will all be virtual and put on the website. So it'll be a, a clear-cut data piece that we can measure consistently over time. And then lastly, we will continue to focus on targeted community partnerships, especially with major employers in the area. This initiative is crucial for strengthening trust and enhancement, enhancing enrollment. These partnerships represent our commitment to building a stronger community together. All right. So in less than four months, we've established the foundation for a more robust and strategic communications plan and grounded it in clarity, consistency, and community. I appreciate your support, and I would like to welcome any questions.
No, I would just personally kind of what I said before. I think, I think I've definitely noticed the increased presence online and just some things with still having kids in the district, so thanks for, it's come leaps and bounds from where we were.
Melissa, one of the key partnerships you're part of is the Education Foundation. Could you give just a quick Flyer Fest update?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So Flyer Fest is happening on October 30th. Last year, it was a fundraising event for the Activities Department. And this year, it is a partnership between Activities and the Education Foundation. It is going to be the 30th from 6:30 to 9:00 PM. Just a really great social time, and there'll be a couple of games for the entire group to play, but really from the Education Foundation, we're raising funds to increase those grant dollars that we're currently awarding to teachers. The max that they will offer is $1,500 right now, but as you know, $1,500 doesn't go as far as it used to, so we would like to, one, be able to offer more opportunities for those that apply for innovative grants, but then to also increase that to $2,000 to those that request it.
Awesome. And that's at the bottom.
That's at the bottom. Pretty much, they go to get tickets. Sounds like a commercial here. You can go online on our website, it's right on our website. If you scroll to the bottom, there's a little blog post about it, and you just click there and then it'll take you over to the, the link.
Okay.
Going back to your quarterly newsletter.
Yeah.
Does that get sent to everyone in our school district if they have kids or not? Or is it just to the families that we have kids in the school district?
Great question. No, so it goes to every household in our school district. So there's about, I think it's 7,700. And then I also have a link, or you can give me a call at the district office too, if you are not living within those district lines and you want to get the newsletter. But the next step is to cross-reference those families that are not physically living in the district, but to make sure that they get one.
Well, I guess I'm thinking more of the, uh, people, folks that don't have kids in school. And when they see our building projects and referendum and all this stuff coming up, it's nice to sing our praises so they know that we're moving forward and doing what we feel is right for the students with space and, and, and then achievement.
Yeah.
We blow our own horn a little bit.
We do a lot of great things, so we should be, you know, praising those educators and the staff that we have.
Anything else from Melissa?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, next, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
This Thursday, we have a sale of obsolete equipment taking place at Dr. Knight from four until 7:00 PM. That was posted in the Morrison County Record this weekend, and it's been out, actually a part of a email to families. The gym is, we were there Thursday, moving items from Dr. Knight that are obsolete into the gym, as well as obsolete equipment from other buildings in the district. That gym in adjacent hallway is full of materials. I thought a data point you might be interested in as we talk about the financial impact of trying to keep our facilities up to date and just how challenging that can be. This information came out from the Minnesota Rural Education Association just this week. Maybe you saw it. That Election Day is November 4th, less than two weeks from today. And there are 79 school districts in the state that are seeking voter support for either building bonds, capital project levies, and operating referendum increases. It totals over $1.6 billion in asks of community members throughout the state. Forty-five districts are seeking almost $1 billion in building bonds and 621 million in capital levies, while 43 districts are requesting operating referendum increases averaging $818 per pupil. That's the average projected increase.
And I believe ours is at 200?
Ours is 224.
224?
Mm-hmm. Obviously, we wish all of those districts the best of luck, knowing full well that some will pass and some will not, but it just highlights the growing funding needs that exist within our schools across the state. Kelsey was able to join a large contingency of folks and myself with the Lindbergh Playground ribbon cutting last week. That was a lot of fun. And then just another shout out to Chris Majeris. Chris is the head custodian at Lincoln Elementary, and he received just two weeks ago the 2025 Facilities Award of Excellence for the Mass-Miss Northern Chapter Award in the state of Minnesota. Kudos to Chris. And a shout out to Sharon, who is mending after surgery today.
That's it?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we'll go to new business. We have student information systems. I'm assuming Mr. Deo will give us a quick synopsis.
Yeah, I'm going to just take one thing on to his superintendent report before we start. So I, I apparently am a glutton for punishment because we finished one playground on Wednesday last week and started the other one today. So the playground for the early childhood space, holes were being dug today and equipment started going up, just one after another.
Get it before the snow flies.
That's right, that's right. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board. In 2022, the district switched our student information system and our financial system from Skyward SMS and SBS platforms to Cumulative. And we did that at that time because we were being required by our risk insurance carriers to implement multi-factor authentication. And instead of trying to go out and, and get a whole brand-new system that maybe we weren't going to be familiar with the lingo and everything else, we just decided to move from one system within Skyward to another. Well, that, that change has proven to be more and more problematic as we go and has created more and more headaches for our staff and has really become a huge challenge. And so we, as a district, took the step to go out and look at other student information systems. If you look across the state for a, or if you look across the landscape for a district our size, there's really five student information systems that you can use. You can use the old Skyward system, you can use the new Skyward system, you can use a system from Power School or Pearson called Power School, you can use this, an application called Synergy, or you can use an application called Infinite Campus. And so what we did is we sent out and requested from Infinite Campus, Synergy, and Power, Power School, a request to show us some pricing, answer some questions for us, give us, give us a proposal. And only two of the three opted to do that, and that was Synergy and Infinite Campus. And so we had both of those organizations in, met with a group of about 20 district staff from all different buildings, and showed us their information, their student information system. And it was nearly unanimous that the district should look to switch to Infinite Campus for the '26, '27 school year. That transition is not an easy feat, as you can imagine. That's, there's a lot of data. There's thousands, you know, a couple thousand kids, plus we go back and we house data for the past basically five years of graduates. And so there's terabytes of data that are out there for our students. And so we have to, if we want to engage in a new student information system, we need to get in the process and get the process going now to make it as seamless as we can for everybody. So we are recommending to you tonight to accept a proposal from Infinite Campus for us to switch to them for the start of the '26, '27 school year. Year over year, Infinite Campus will actually cost us less than Skyward when you take into an account all of the auxiliary systems and platforms that we have to purchase along with Skyward. So for example, we have to purchase hosting services from iScore, we have to purchase the school messenger solution, we have to purchase services from Vanco for doing an online store and all these other things. And there's about four more, I think, total that we purchase. And when you take the cost of all of those along with Skyward and you compare that to Infinite Campus on an ongoing basis, the Infinite Campus is actually cheaper and we have all of those utilities within there. Year one, you always have some migration costs, right? You have to do the conversion, there's some training costs that are associated. But we feel that that's, it's worth it to us to spend that money. Our staff, we had, I told you, we had those presentations. I had three staff members that came up to me during the break of the presentation and said, could we switch tomorrow? And I said, no, we can't switch tomorrow. It's not feasible for us to do that. But we can switch for July 1st. And so that's what we're asking you to do, is we're asking you to approve a, a change of student information systems from Skyward Cumulative to Infinite Campus for the '26, '27 school year. And I'll take any questions you have.
Is there, I mean, again, I know what you're talking about with migrating the information. Is there, I'm assuming there's support available? And is there some, I guess, built-in, but like support that we don't have to pay for, I guess, in the initial transition?
Yeah, so there's, you pay, you, you, as part of the conversion fee, you pay for the professional services to convert all of the data from the Skyward format into the Infinite Campus format. But you also pay for a, a training suite or for their trainers to work with our staff to help us get the system configured the way our people need it to be configured to work for Little Falls' needs. And that's just, you're going to face that no matter who you work with, it's just going to be part of the cost of converting. Now, ongoing, what we will have is much better support. Skyward, Skyward's support model is basically that, hey, we're going to send you the link to a video, you watch that, and then you'll know what to do, right? Where the Infinite Campus support model is, hey, we're going to walk, we're going to give you four people that can talk to us from the technical aspect, and we're going to walk them through how, how we fix this problem so that they can fix it for you, and then they can share that back out. They also have an extensive training library, they have a monthly user group sessions, or they focus on different aspects that might be unique to a, to a school. So like, for example, during January, when you're starting to set up your registration for your secondary, secondary schools for the next year, that's when they start training on that. And so it's very timely and meaningful training. I hope I answered your question.
Yep, no, that makes sense. Yep, thank you. Other questions for Mark? Okay, thank you, Mark. Looks like this is an action item. So I guess what I would be looking for is a motion to approve the student information system, request to transfer from Skyward to Infinite Campus. So moved, I have a motion by Dan. Do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
I have a second by Kelsey. I have a second by Kelsey. Any further discussion? Questions?
I had one for Mark. You only keep records for five years? So my permanent record now is gone?
Your permanent record, Mr. Gerby, is still on file. It is in the Hall of Fame for the principal's office. No, we keep, um, when we do a conversion like this, we'll keep the records back for students that graduated up to five years ago. So we'll keep all of those records. Um, students that were in the system prior, their names are there, but not all of their records, just the minimum of what we need to keep. But for reporting purposes and things like writing grants and and other reports for the state, we will keep up to five years back. Yep.
All right.
Okay, anything else for Mark?
Did you want us to try to find that, uh, permanent record? That file of yours?
Can review that next month.
I'll be saving a lot of file space. Get rid of that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries. Next, technology staffing plan. This also is an action item. Um,
Yes, per our discussion last week at the work session, we, we looked at data relative to the staffing levels in our technology department. The past two years, we've been down two positions, and it's significantly impacted our ability to be able to provide effect, effective technology support and integration the last couple of years. So asking tonight, your approval of posting a network administrative position to help stabilize technology operations and support that area moving forward.
Okay, so I would look for a motion for that.
So moved.
I have a motion by Kelsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries. Next, looks like we have another resolution. Kels?
Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide supports for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the governing board of the Little Falls Community High School recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of Little Falls Community Schools District four eighty-two supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a grant to offset student activity fees.
I will second your
All right, so, um, Dan?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Um, next item is the approval of October twenty-twenty-five lane changes. I believe those are just kind of built-in, correct? There's really nothing we can do about those or negotiate it in. Um, so that is an action item as well. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the October twenty-twenty-five lane changes.
So moved.
A motion by Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries. Next, older unfinished business, school district property. And this is just a discussion, maybe to give an update on some of the properties we are looking at selling and
Correct.
Mr. Deal?
I'm back. So, um, let's start up north, um, with the Dr. Knight facility. So there's been, uh, as you know, we have the facility listed with, um, with Edina Realty. It's out on the M L S. Tom Scherling and Travis Johnson are working on that one on our behalf. And they, um, I get a text message from Travis every time somebody goes out to look at it. This was the first weekend that there wasn't somebody out there looking at it. Probably was a good thing, because the place is just full of stuff right now. But, um, uh, he's had a number of, uh, potential buyers through, and, um, he said he has one that he thinks is really interested, but you know, until you see an offer, you know, you don't know for sure. Um, we still have, uh, a potential buyer who expressed interest in it before we listed it. We have not received an offer from them yet, but all indications are that they are likely going to submit one. From what, if I'm reading the emails correctly, which I think I am. So that's where we stand with that. If we go to the west side of town, we've got uh, the forty acres for sale just north of the zoo. And those are still for sale. Again, being listed by Travis and, uh, Tom. And hopefully, hopefully we'll see some action on that, uh, in the near future. Remains to be seen. So then we have, uh, let's go south of the high school to the kind of three-acre, almost three-acre parcel that we have there on the south side of the high school where we're talking about Habitat Partnership. There is some, there's some property to the south of where Habitat would like to build. There's a little over an acre, I think it is, um, down there that, um, we, we need to work with, um, a couple of the property owners to see if they're willing to, uh, purchase the land. We can't trap the land. It's gotta be connected to somebody's property. So there's a really small amount of people that there's really only three parties that could buy it. And so we need to work with those parties to see, um, who wants to, who wants to purchase that. I think we've come to an agreement and we've come to a plan on as to how that would get platted out. And so our next step is actually to take that to the city and say for their planning and zoning committee to go to, to approve, approve the plat or pre-approved the plat at their, the concept of it. And then if they give us their blessing, then we can go through the process of getting all of the legal descriptions done for each of those parcels, um, to be purchased. So if you keep swinging around, um, to the east of the high school, um, it's not a property that we own there, but the old Busy Bee for, uh, property is owned by the Contiguity Group, and they are interested in doing a land swap with us for some property that we own out near the fairgrounds. You, you as a board had asked me to investigate whether or not, um, there was any revenue coming in from the, uh, communications towers that are out there. And, uh, Travis Fickman from Contiguity and I were able to review some of the, the lease documents and the original documents from when the land was transferred over to the district from the Fair Board. And, um, all it refers to is an easement, so there is no financial money coming into the district at all for, um, that tower that sits there. There's just an easement on the property that gives them access to have that tower there. I feel like I'm missing one. Oh, yes, yes, yes. The one to the, just to the west of, of, um, the district office building. So that is that unbuildable property, and one of the neighbors would like to gain access to that property, and so we're working with them to try to, uh, make that happen for them so that they can obtain that and, uh, and use it for their personal purposes that they have. So, I think I got them all.
Any questions for Mark?
Isn't there one south of town? The little Snow Dogs racetrack? I think we leased it out for years to a farmer.
Boy, that's a, you're talking about Snow Dogs racetrack. That's, that's like old school, isn't that, Gerby?
I am old school. So I was talking about permanent record. Goes back, I don't know, sixty years.
We do have a property south of town. It's a forty acres of ag land that is a test plot for our F F A.
Okay.
The girls probably know more about it than we do.
I know we used to rent it out years ago.
It was just harvested, actually. We had a record year, a hundred and fifty-eight-one.
Wow, that's Was it corn?
Yep.
Ever thought of doing a corn maze out there?
Good idea.
Get some more income and then you still got your crops.
We thought about sweet corn, but they all said that was too much work, so.
Who's they? Don't listen to they.
Yeah.
Just an idea.
Anything else for Mark? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, reports from Morg members. Mr. Schilling, care to start?
Sure. I had a chance to meet with Mr. Ed Kim earlier this week, or this week? Last week, Monday. Uh, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the ribbon cutting, but he said so far this year, everything has really taken off smoothly as far as integrating the Randall kids in. No, no real hookups there. The teachers were all phenomenal that have been relocated. The kids were definitely excited for using the equipment on the playground for the first time on Wednesday, so that's all I got.
Yeah, good, thank you. Mr. Gerby?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Julie?
Nothing to report.
Kels?
Have a few things. I met with Gianna, um, over at the preschool. She, I shared with you guys that ninety percent of the students there are, the seats are all full at preschool. I did share that with you guys, um, last week, but the the V P K program that we, it was a grant that we applied for a couple of years ago, um, that provides, um, grant money for students to get basically free preschool. Ninety percent of our students are either getting some sort of grant or that V P K, um, and it's free to ninety percent of our families. So that is a great highlight for that, that program and the work that Gianna's doing over there. I hope I said that right.
You did.
Tomorrow.
No.
Um, and then I also was able to meet with Mr. Dobus over at Lincoln. He is diving deep into data analysis right now, so he is working on looking at student achievement. Um, they did a review of the, um, the lunchroom. It has proven to be very noisy. Um, and it's, the way he described it is that the kids are really just talking at a normal level, but the room is so loud. So he had, um, uh, a professional in sounds and acoustics come in and look at the space, and it looks like they're gonna be making some changes to um, the lunchroom to make it
Less noisy.
Less noisy. Yeah, but otherwise, everything's going well. Um, they had their first end-of-the-month celebration, and that really highlights, we talked about a letter that we received, um, last week, um, from one of the, the grandparents, but really speaks to the culture, uh, that they have there at Lincoln. So if you guys can do, uh, one of those month-end celebrations, they are really awesome. Um, and then I'm just gonna talk about that, uh, ribbon cutting. Those kids, I'm gonna tell you, Mark, that that was like torture to have the kids start school and not be able to go to that playground until that ribbon cutting. So that was really tough for them, but it was so cute. We, we went up all the way to the top of that big tower, if you guys have seen it yet. Um, and Greg and I took a picture and they wanted, they wanted us to go down the slide, so they sat there chanting, "Use the slide!" And Greg did not go down the slide. They're all like, "Aww!" It was super cute.
You did, though?
No, it was sure dirty. It was really dirty. They had just put a bunch of mulch on, so like all the dust and film were all over the slides in the morning, so no, we didn't. But climbing up that thing is quite a feat when you are as old as we are, but um, it was great that Melissa could be there as well and capture all those moments, but the kids were ecstatic and um, that playground is, is gonna be great for years to come, and I'm super excited for um, the little flyers and the, be able to use a new playground as well. That's great for those little kids as well.
Mm-hmm, awesome.
That's what I have.
Awesome, thank you. Um, I just, the only thing I have is just fall sports, which gals, you know, are kind of winding down, and so winter will be upon us. There's some, some our teams in playoffs. You know, otherwise, I think all the reports I hear from the high school are, things are going pretty well, so. All right, any other business to be, come before the board? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Mark, a second? A second, a second by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, guys.